Bless us.
Would you join me in prayer? Father, we are grateful this evening, Lord, for another day of life and we thank you, God, that, Lord, you bless us each and every day. We recognize, God, that it is you, Lord, who gives us life and breath in our bodies. Lord, we pray today that, Lord, as we enter into this time of this council meeting, we pray for wisdom, Lord. We thank you, Lord, for this council, Father, that gives of themselves a Lord to serve this city. Father, we pray your continued blessings on them. And, Lord, we pray a special prayer today, Lord, over our city manager, Greg Smith. Father, as he goes into the future endeavors, Lord, that you are leading him into, God, we ask your blessings on him, that you would go before him and keep him, Lord, we pray, and that you would continue to keep this city, Lord, as we move into the next season here as well. God, we ask your continued blessings and guidance and protection on all of our emergency services personnel, God, that you would keep them as they serve each one of us each and every day, and that you would bless their families, Lord, for giving of them to serve us. We thank you for it, and we ask it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. If you'll join me in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Our first item are some special presentations. They will present the employee of the month and recognize some outgoing JEDCO board members. And we have tonight that's going to do that for us, the chairman of JEDCO, Darrell Dement, and the administrative assistant, Sherri McDonald. So if y'all will come now and present those two, that'd be great.
No, absolutely. We understand.
Prosperity Bank has recently gone through a major transformation. They have torn down a building that was there for years, an old building, and they've built a beautiful new building in this place. I just learned of the number of years of service that this group collectively holds, and it's well over 100. That they have been a great organization. I mean, that's a lot of years. This is a lot of experience with these ladies right here. The downtown has really been trying to transform into a revitalized place, a welcoming people, for people to come down and enjoy. And this building is a beautiful building. It's a wonderful addition to our downtown. I saw that the Prosperity Bank is Jacksonville, Samson, and a lot of people do, and it was Franklin Bank, and now Prosperity Bank. And we couldn't be more proud to honor you with your 12 employees with all those years of experience for the service that you give to Jacksonville, Texas. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Lena took and Matt Rowe are leaving our board, and they have served each for three years. And I have had the honor of working with them. And the work that JEDCO has done in the last three years has been tremendous. They each brought a different skill set when they came onboard. Lena has years of experience in banking, relationships with the business community. She has customer and employee retention skills, managerial skills. I can just keep on thinking about her. Matt Rowe is an entrepreneur with Grove Plant Farm, and he is probably sales and marketing is also a big, strong suit of Matt's. I just feel like he has his finger on the pulse of just what people want when they want to visit a town or move to a town like Jacksonville. And he has brought great ideas, and we appreciate their service so much. I wanted to tell you a few things that maybe have, they've contributed to while they have been working at JEDCO. A 128 unit apartment-grade community development is under construction as we speak, and it's the first one of its kind in 40 years in Jacksonville, Texas. Lu Bay Group, they were instrumental in sealing a deal with them. An Italian company that bought Zyklus Heat Exchange. The U.S. acquisition is the first for them. They have plants in other countries, but this was the first in the U.S. market, so we're very excited. They're building a 200,000-plus-foot facility. They will invest over $5 million for their capital investment and bring over 50 jobs. The South Jackson Strip Center, where the former Radio Shack used to be, is now a three-business strip center. Jersey Mike's is now in the strip center, and they are a sales tax generating business. And plus, the new development brought over 300,000 new developments to the tax laws. There's a soccer complex, restroom concession facility that we partnered with the silly city to deal. New retail development, we saw Wendy's, barbecue place, Chick-fil-A, et cetera. Bales Distribution Center, Bales from Florida has now taken over the stage Distribution Center, and this group was instrumental in getting them here. Just lots of Facebook projects, demo projects, downtown redevelopment projects, all totaling over $1 million in capital investment, and just sales tax collections that have increased over the three years that they've served on our board. So I just want to congratulate them for their service, and if Darrell wants to say anything, please.
I appreciate you joining the board and the time, and it's been great working with you. You've taught me a lot, and I enjoy each moment. I appreciate your help. It's been great. Always been great. It's been absolutely great. Just thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Our next item is our citizens' participation. This is where our citizens can address the council with any concern. Don't think we had anybody that turned in a paper. Did anybody want to participate that chose not to? Okay. Hearing none, we'll go to our next item. Our next item is item number six, public hearing to receive input on the 2021-2022 proposed budget. So our budget, we had our budget workshop about two weeks ago. This is a public hearing. It's, I think it's been posted on our website. So I will open this public hearing to hear comments if you want to talk in favor of or against the budget. Now's your time to come shine if you'd like to do so. All right. Seeing none, we will close that portion of the public hearing. Item number seven is a public hearing to receive input on a zone change from Zone O, Agricultural, to A, Single Family, 8.478 acres, barren subdivision, number one, Lot 2J, Ford Survey, Abstract-268, and the 1100 block of Panita Street, City of Jacksonville, Texas. Robert Tinsley is the applicant. So I will open this up to a public hearing. If you want to come and speak in favor of or against, you're welcome to. Come to the podium, state your name, and if you want to speak in favor of. Okay. Since you're the applicant, I figured you might.
I'm just here to see if I can get the zone change and answer any questions y'all may have. It's at the end of Panita Street, and should be enough room for 30 houses to come in if we can get this approved and done.
Okay. Very good. Anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you, sir.
I'll go start them.
You bet. Anybody want to speak in opposition of? Okay. Hearing none, we will close that portion of the public hearing, and we'll go to item number eight is to discuss and consider with possible action an ordinance making a zone change from O, Agriculture, to A, Single Family District, the 8.478 acres, barren subdivision, number one, Lot 2J, Ford Survey, Abstract-268, 1100 block of Panita Street, City of Jacksonville, Texas. Robert Tinsley is the applicant. Greg, did you have anything you wanted to talk about that?
Yeah, I'll just add that Planning and Zoning had a similar public hearing. Planning and Zoning approved this request and is recommending approval at a vote of five to zero, and staff also is recommending the approval.
Okay.
Do we have all the utilities in place, all the, I mean, everything we need from the city standpoint to handle 30 houses? Water, sewer?
Yes. There will be infrastructure needed to be put on his private property, but the infrastructure around does have enough to handle.
Drainage and that type of things from our standpoint.
Yes, sir. It does.
What's the timeframe of 30 houses coming to town? I mean, well, exactly.
I'll start tomorrow.
Yeah. I mean, next five years, probably.
Oh, I hope it starts tomorrow.
Good.
Good.
Would the interest of the subdivision be off of Panita Street, Robert?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Down, to the left.
Okay.
Or left, or down and down?
Yeah. Yeah, I live on Lake Shore, so, yeah, so, okay.
The old house and underbrush is all gone.
Oh, yeah. I've seen the, yeah, I've seen the clearing. Okay. I was just curious. Okay.
All right. I'll entertain a motion on item number eight.
I'll make a motion that we approve the, are we doing a zone change or?
Yes.
Yeah. That we approve this zone change.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen. Second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any discussion we need to have? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number nine is our consent agenda. This is, they require little or no deliberations by the council, just kind of in the forsake of time. You can see the approving the minutes, changing some signature cards at the bank. There's a property tax refund, change to the Jacksonville beautiful bylaws, truck or treat, and we're appointing a fee liapen to the JEDCO board. So I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Galloch.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Rob Goen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 10 is to discuss and consider with possible action a resolution by the city council of the City of Jacksonville, Texas authorizing publication of a notice of an intent to issue certificates of obligation, approving the preparation of a preliminary official statement, and approving other matters incidental thereto. Mr. Gray?
Yes, counsel. This is very exciting that we are at this point with this. This is a certificate of obligation issuance that will do $10 million in street repairs in the city of Jacksonville. We have both our bond counsel and financial advisor if we have any specific questions for those gentlemen. But this has been discussed at at least two of the council workshops on Thursday and then spent quite a bit of time during our budget workshop on this. And so our bond counsel, Jonathan Farrell, has drafted the resolution, which is Resolution 08-2021-01, and the schedule is still on plan to be issued by the end of this year and funds be in place. So this is very exciting. This does, this issuance with the current INS tax rate, we have, there will be no tax rate increase in our INS or our city tax rate for this issuance of certificate of obligations.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we move forward with the notice of intent to issue the certificates of obligation.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen. Second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any other? Yes, absolutely.
Could I ask Councilmember Goen to?
Read more?
No, just state the resolution number. I think would be a little bit better instead of just moving forward.
Hold on.
Would you like me to read it for you?
Page 66.
Okay. A move that we approve the resolution number 08-2021-01 to publish notice of intent to issue certificates of obligation, approving the preparation of a preliminary official statement, and approving other matters incidental thereto.
Perfect.
Thank you, sir.
I had to find it.
So we still have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen, but it's an official.
Keep it legal.
At this point. Do I hear a second? Second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any discussion we might need? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 11 is to discuss and consider with possible action health leave policies for all first responders, which would include a mental health policy and a quarantine policy, and that's item 11 in your packet.
Yes, counsel. So the first one is a mental health policy, and this is dealing specifically with law enforcement, and it gives them, gives all officers to be allowed up to 40 hours of paid mental health leave per calendar year, and then has some other specifics to it. The next one is employee paid quarantine leave policy, and it also deals with the ability for employees to be presumed that if they do receive a communicable disease, that they are, it is presumed to be contracted at work. And this is, these are both state law requirements, that policies have to be in place by September 1, and so staff is recommending approval. So the second policy applies specifically to detention officers, EMS employees, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, and police officers. It is specifically for those.
Okay. Now, do we need a motion for each, or do we, can we do both at one time?
I would probably do both.
Both at one time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion on item number 11.
I make a motion that we approve the health, new health leave policies to include the mental health policy and the quarantine policy.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Galloch. Second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion does carry. Item number 12 is to discuss and consider with possible action a replat request for proposed lots 10R and 11R, Rust subdivision, Lake Jacksonville.
Yes, counsel. This plat is, staff is recommending it. This is dealing with two property owners that are trying to clean up some property lines out on Lake Jacksonville. The neighbors are working together on this. This is our part of it. Also, with part of this, they are asking the county to abandon a little bit of right-of-way. It is not being used, so they will also go to the county. So if you've looked at the plat, you'll see some abandoned right-of-way. That is not our right-of-way to abandon. That will be the county's. Staff has met with the county commissioner and the county attorney on this, and they did not see an issue with the right-of-way being abandoned. So staff is recommending approval of this plat.
Okay. Well, this isn't the first time we've seen this, correct? I mean, we've seemed like we've seen this before.
This is probably.
Prelimarily.
You might have seen it preliminarily.
Right. Long time ago.
Yeah. This has been going on for a year. There was actually a third party involved, and that third party was not as eager to get this done as the other two parties, so we moved forward with the, just the two parties.
Got it. Okay. I'll entertain a motion on item 12.
I'll make a motion that we approve a replat for the proposed lots 10R and 11R in the rest subdivision of Lake Jacksonville.
We have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen. I'll second that motion by Randy Gorm. Is there any discussion need to be made? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion does carry. Item number 13 is to discuss and consider with possible action a plat of new section, South Shore subdivision, Block D, lots 1 through 7.
Yes, counsel. You have seen this before. This is the property that the city owns located off of County Road 3108. This is actually subdividing it into seven lots. Planning and zoning did meet and approved it 3-0. I would like to go on the record and state that we are working with Craft Turney Water Supply Corporation for enhancements or extensions of public infrastructure, specifically water with Craft Turney. There's a process that we have to go through to do this, and so we will be funding the cost for the water improvements in front of these seven lots, and that will be immediately started after the approval of this plat. And staff is recommending approval, and P&amp;Z also recommends approval.
Okay. You see that plat there? I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the plat of section of South Shore subdivision, Block D, lots 1 through 7.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Galloch.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. I heard him first. Any discussion we need to have? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion does carry. Item number 14 is to discuss and consider with possible action a warning of bid for the sale of an overlay machine and a roller. Item number 14 in your packet.
Yes, counsel. Staff evaluated these items and set a minimum bid for $65,000 for the Leboy asphalt paver, and then $45,000 for the Case D45 roller. Staff did put these out for sealed bids. We did receive one bid from CAPS, Capco Construction Incorporated, from Tyler, and his bid was $65,005 for the asphalt paver and $45,000 and five, $45,005 for the roller. So staff is recommending the approval of selling both these items to CAPS, Capco Construction Incorporated.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we sell the two pieces of equipment to CAPS, Capco, the overlay machine and the roller.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen.
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Galloch. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 15 is to discuss and consider with possible action an ordinance closing Deveraux Street to through traffic.
Yes, counsel. The ordinance has been placed at your desk today. This was originally discussed when the Chick-fil-A opened up and we did the one-way street on Nakadoches. We discussed the Deveraux location as another street that we needed to address, and what this ordinance is doing is creating Deveraux as a no-through traffic, and this is to provide proper and safe access in and out of the public safety complex for Deveraux. That section of Deveraux is a very narrow street, and it is in the best interest of the public and all of our first responders to make that street a no-through traffic street.
Okay.
And staff does recommend approval, and legal counsel did draw up the ordinance.
Great.
Are there, let me think of one home there on the corner. Are we limiting their access to their property at all, or?
No, sir. No access has been limited whatsoever. So there's actually property on, there's four property owners, and all four have existing access and will continue to have access to their property.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion we approve an ordinance closing Deveraux Street to through traffic.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Galloch.
Do I need to do the ordinance number? Okay.
Second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any discussion? I actually was a little concerned about this. Greg and I drove out there yesterday. Deveraux Street is fairly wide at South Bolton, but there, it gets smaller and smaller as you get to Bonner. He and I drove out there. We turned around, made a U-turn. It was a legal U-turn, but, and came back, and we met one of our police captains coming out, and at the constriction, it was, both trucks could barely fit on that, on that road. So I saw Mr. Fortner, Chief Fortner, at lunch today, and he said if a truck and the ladder truck met at that point, someone's got to get off the road. If it had been raining for five days, and if the ladder truck was the so-chosen vehicle to give right-of-way, it could get stuck potentially. So after I drove it and saw it, I understand the need for it, so.
Just as a point of clarification.
Yes, sir.
This is only going to affect that portion of Deveraux Street between Bonner and Bolton. The rest of Deveraux Street will?
Remain, yeah. Correct. And it's a whole lot wider, the rest of Deveraux.
Oh, yes.
Big time wider, so.
Yeah. And for the record, we also considered widening Deveraux. We did look at that, and it was cost prohibitive because all of the power and communication poles are already up against the pavement, so you had no real advantage without relocating all of those utilities. There was no way to effectively widen the street, but we did look at that as a first alternative, and it just was not cost feasible.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion does carry. Open forum for mayor and council. We're down to that part. Anybody have something to say? Here's my open forum. As most of you are aware, this is the last council meeting for our city manager, Mr. Greg Smith. His last official day with our city will be this coming Thursday, August 12th. So on behalf of the city council, I want to personally thank him for his leadership these last three-plus years. Greg came in, made some tough decisions, and put us on a path of unprecedented growth like Jacksonville has not seen in the recent past. He has been a pleasure to work with during this time, and Jacksonville is a better place because of his stay here with us. And just, I want to invite everybody to come by City Hall this coming Thursday, beginning at 1:30, to wish him well in his new venture in the city of Denison, Texas. Appreciate your service, Mr. Gray.
Thank you.
If there's no other, we'll go to the city managers' report.
All right. So I will be as quick as I can with this. First off, I want to announce that our Kimberly Lynn is our new permanent finance director. I've made that appointment today, and so she will be taking that position on a permanent basis, and we are extremely excited to have Kim onboard and that we are able to promote our finance director from within. We always have strived, and council has put additional funds in our budget to help train and advance the careers of our employees, and there's even more money in this year, or next year's operating budget to continue that process. So we are extremely excited for Kim to do that. Obviously, the next one is I just want to thank everybody. When I came here three years ago, I had no idea what this community would have for me, and this community has been outstanding. For every one of these council members that hired me, to the council members that have joined us since that time, it has been an honor to serve with each and every one of you. To all of the department heads that have stood here and have worked with us to make this a better place, hats off to you and to all the employees. Without the employees, there's no way we could have achieved what we have. This is a team approach. It's not one of us. It's all of us together, and I appreciate all the hard work and dedication the department heads and all our employees have done. To all the residents, simply thank you. You have supported me. You have been here. We may not have seen eye to eye on.
We may not have seen eye to eye on every single issue, but together, this community has joined forces and is on a path that is unstoppable. And I wish James the very best. He will do a fantastic job leading this city moving forward. There is no doubt in my mind, and I know there's no doubt in any council member's mind, of what his ability will be and that this community will continue to flourish and grow and make improvements. What we have accomplished in three years is almost amazing. From everything that JEDCO has done, to all of our departments have done, to the improvements, to the infrastructure, to the facilities, this community is a better place today for all the hard work and dedication of this council and all of our employees. And for that, I say thank you, and I will never forget it.
Very good.
Thank you.
You bet. We appreciate what you've done for us. We wish you well. Godspeed. At this point, item number 18 is a closed executive session City Hall conference room for Open Meetings Act, per Texas Government Code Sections 551.071. Consult city attorney regarding litigation on the Watson lawsuit. We will reconvene at open session for any action if necessary, and then we will adjourn at that point. So at this point, at 6:31, we will go into executive session. Thank you for coming. So, cool.